I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mary Ann Gordon.
Present.
Counselor Weber, here. Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Ridley, here. Counselor Blackwell, here. Counselor Doyle. Sorry, here. And Counselor Stout.
Here, thank you.
You have two items this evening. The first one is professional liability insurance for privately funded public improvements. We need an acronym for that.
So here tonight are is Jeff Pascal, who is the DPW Community Development Division Director. I also spoke with Jamie Aboa, Risk Manager and Stan Pedroff, City Engineer in preparing this packet. So the information here is is from those, you know, sources all combined. The purpose of this work session is to ask that for the council's input on potential changes to professional liability insurance requirements for design professionals such as engineers on privately funded public improvement projects or PIPs. The acronym PIP in this case includes both the large public improvement permit project, which is also called the PIP, and what are called type two encroachment permits, which is sort of an intermediate step of smaller engineered infrastructure projects that don't require really sophisticated construction coordination with the city. But our one step up from, you know, SUB is doing a minor amount of water line work in the right of way. This comes to the city council based on requests and input from design professionals who work on these projects. In particular, a solo practitioner working in the city on smaller housing projects. The input that the city has received is that the premiums for these insurance policies can be significant when compared to the fees that the engineers might earn on smaller projects. And the city is generally interested in looking at how to streamline permitting processes, make development affordable in the city. And we also have an interest in mitigating risk. We don't want the general tax base to be covering costs that, you know, should be shifted onto a particular developer or design professional. So we're trying to balance, I would say, those two sort of sometimes competing interests. The memo in your packet covers a couple of different topics. First, has a summary of how the city approaches permitting for public improvements. And it can range from everything from capital projects that the city actually solicits bids for and we pay for the construction. We're not talking about that. That's sort of the highest risk activity that we do because we're ultimately responsible for the design and the construction. Public improvement permits are sort of the second next highest risk. These are privately funded projects for large subdivisions or other, you know, large development that requires new infrastructure that needs to be designed and built to city standards. And then it, you know, encroachment print type two is next, encroachment permit type one, the sort of original encroachment permit. That usually covers construction or utility work in the public rights of way that we don't need an engineering as-built design for. So that stuff that disturbs the ground is construction work, but we don't need proof of final grades or elevation or conformance with city designs. And then we even allow some work to be done in the public right of way by utilities without any permits at all. So the memo kind of covers the risk level associated with that and what we require currently for insurance. And it also goes over a little bit of the history of the approach to professional liability insurance. Until 2021, 2022, there was a practice of sort of on an ad hoc basis. If somebody requested to not provide $2 million in coverage for professional liability, the city engineer would sometimes approve a lower amount, but there was no formalized risk process involved and there wasn't great record keeping. And then also certain design professionals didn't know there was even an option to request a lower amount. So in practice, it was one or two individuals that were allowed to provide a lower level of insurance on certain projects. It led to a lot of use of staff time to go back and forth to do an ad hoc informal risk assessment to make that decision. And so in 2020 and 2021, after a lot of, I would say, sort of disputes about what level of insurance should we require for specific projects, I consulted with our then-risk manager, who consulted at Brown and Brown, our risk consultants, who are still our risk consultants. And I worked with Jeff, who was then city engineer, to update, as part of updates to the EDS PM Engineering Design Standards and Procedures Manual, to adopt the $2 million insurance requirement as a consistent requirement, where we would not be approving lower limits, but we did put in place the encroachment permit type two process to lower other costs. So trying to kind of balance, you know, lowering certain other deposit requirements in favor of stricter liability insurance. In, and then in 2023, based on requests from design professionals that the commercial general liability coverage we were requiring was pointless. And because the contractor also carried that coverage, we looked into that further and removed that requirement. So that had been in place for, that requirement had been in place since at least 2017, but we were able to eliminate that requirement on design professionals. So today they're currently required to carry professional liability coverage to work on a PIP. And that $2 million is set based on the Oregon Tort Claims Act limit. It is at the higher end of what the Oregon Claims Act states the city would be responsible for because in construction defect cases, there are often lots of claimants. And so the city would not potentially be the only party who's making a claim on that engineer's insurance. The contractor, the developer, a future property owner could all be making claims against the same insurance policy. So if the coverage limit is lower, then that's not, the coverage limit isn't the cap on what the city can recover. It's a cap on the entire payout. So that is why it's set to be that higher amount. It ensures that the city would receive everything we could potentially be liable for, even if there are multiple claimants. It more closely matches that level. And then even more recently in 2024 and 2025, we've had a request from a local engineer who works on largely smaller projects to further reduce or lower those insurance requirements. The council received a letter. I followed up with that engineer, submitted the public comment to get some information and find out a little bit more about the, for example, in his, in his letter, he had polled some local firms to find out what insurance they carry and would they continue to carry that insurance. I also gave a summary of firms that have worked on public improvement permits for the city in the last five years. And I was able to to find out that there's some overlap in the two sets of firms, but not every firm that has worked on PIPs in the last five years was included on the engineer's sort of informal survey. And also some parties were surveyed informally who hadn't actually worked on a PIP for the city in the last five years. They may have worked on something for another public entity. My list, sorry, my list only included those privately funded ones. So if SUB came in or LTD came in with a PIP process, I didn't count that as a privately funded project because even though they're using our public, our process for privately funded projects, it's really a public project. It's just a different public entity. So, so there's some match there that there are definitely firms out there that will probably carry lower insurance requirements if if we lowered the insurance policy, but it wasn't, I don't think we could say that we know that for every firm. And then the memo also covers some data on the number of permits and the total project value of work that's been done in the city in the last five years. And I think what's particularly informative is that solo practitioners compared to large firms are doing the same amount of work in terms of the number of permits for projects that are below $150,000 in value. So those smaller side of the projects. And then the total value of the work being done in terms of construction value is higher for solo practitioners for $150,000 projects and below. So they're doing the same amount of permit work, but slightly more profitable work, it seems like. Other information that is, I think, important for the council to know is that when we look at the distribution of, you know, what types of work are solo practitioners and small and mid-sized firms doing in Springfield? The smaller projects that are housing related are being done by solo practitioners, small, mid-sized firms and large firms. But when we look at small permits for commercial projects, those are really only being done by large firms. So commercial development just seems to be a different engineering market in the city than residential. So if the council is wanting to sort of target the cost of housing, then lowering, you could do that either by lowering the costs for everything. Or if you limited to lowering costs for smaller projects, you would benefit housing projects slightly more than you would benefit commercial projects. And then we have seen in 2025, much better use of the encroachment permit type two process. That was, I think, a little bit slept on by the design development community for the first couple of years it was available. SUB and LTD have made great use of that process, but now we're seeing it being used for residential projects. An example of the types of projects that, actually all three that we've seen so far in 2025 are, you know, projects where you're getting more housing units and they need a private sewer line and that sewer line is going to come and connect to the public line. And there needs to be, for example, a small, small extension of the public sewer line and then a new manhole and access location put in. And so that requires some engineered as-built drawings of that manhole location and the small extension of the public line. But it's not highly complex coordinated construction with a stormwater facility and sewer lines and water lines and lots of different competing elements. There are still risks associated with that type of project anytime there's new public infrastructure. If that public infrastructure fails, then that is a risk to the city. And those claims can be expensive depending on the type of damage that's done. So the city's council has quite a few options. Some of those were laid out in a privileged memo that I sent to the city council in January. Happy to talk through those, but at a high level, they, you know, options could include lowering professional liability insurance for certain types of permits. It could look like requiring that formal, a formal risk assessment for each project to determine its insurance. That would require more staff time and staff in this area are already, I think, working pretty hard and have a sort of a lack of a lot of bench depth. So that's going to be a resource ask on staff, whether that's looks like slowing down the pace at which they can work or needing to pull in other staffing resources. Jeff can definitely talk about those impacts more if the council wants to go that direction. The recommendation is that, I think, one of the easiest things to do that balances a good level of risk mitigation for the city without a lot of staff time and would lower the costs for small firms and solo practitioners who work on smaller projects is to drop down the type two encroachment permit insurance requirement to $1 million. The council, if the council wants to see that happen, that can be implemented by Community Development Division Director Jeff without any formal council action. Otherwise, if the council wants to take action on PIP standards or other requirements, we would need to make changes to the Engineering Design Standards and Procedures Manual, which is a council resolution process, and we would come back with something along those lines. So that's the summary of the information that's in your packet. I'm happy to answer questions and I'm really looking for feedback from the council on how you want to approach this issue.
Counselor Blackwell.
Hi, thank you. So I understand, you know, risk mitigation and that, but my question, I guess, is what are we seeing in other jurisdictions? What is the industry norm, if you will, on the amount, the 2 million versus 1 million?
That's a great question. For entities that require insurance, it's most commonly tied to Oregon Tort Claims Act limits. So when insurance is required, it's most commonly at the 2 million level for professional liability. However, not every jurisdiction requires insurance. I would say there's no one standard approach to privately funded infrastructure. Other jurisdictions may not have any professional liability requirement, but they have more engineering staff for the city who are doing more detailed and consistent inspections in the field. For the PIP process, we defer most of the inspections to the developer's design professional. So their engineer is doing all the inspections. It's not city staff doing that. So that's one reason why professional liability is more important for Springfield than, say, Bend. City of Eugene doesn't require it, but they're considering adding it in to help mitigate some risks that they've had previously. Other entities don't allow for any privately designed infrastructure. So, for example, Springfield Utility Board doesn't allow developers to do the design for their electrical infrastructure. So they're mitigating that risk by having all of the infrastructure designed by sub engineers. That adds cost and time to a project, as I think we've seen. So that's would definitely not be feasible for the city to do that approach at this time without a lot more staff. And then other entities contract out for their city engineer just generally. So they're hiring someone through a contract and getting professional liability coverage through that outside city engineer that also acts as another way of kind of shifting some risk away from the general tax base.
Do you have an indication of about how many of these claims happen in a year? I mean, on average for Oregon, let's say, I'm just trying to ballpark.
I don't know how many of the claims happen in Oregon. And we don't, we haven't, we've had, I think, good luck that, and that we haven't had a lot of these claims for PIP-related projects, but we also have required insurance. And I think what, there tends to be a positive feedback cycle where when you require insurance, then you get better practices out of people in order to comply with their insurance company's requirements. So we don't, before we had these requirements in place, we had a very large claims process for the Mountain Gate Slide area. And that was the basis for putting these requirements in place to begin with. We do have many claims throughout the year. It can, on average, I think it was around one a month to, you know, more or less, depending for claims to automobile damage from, you know, pavement or uneven pavement surfaces. So if that was the result of, say, a manhole design project and then that claim went through, then we would look to recover that from either the contractor or from the engineer, depending on the cause. The other issue that we see is that, and I know this is to totally answer your question, but I think it's relevant. The types of damage that would be recoverable from a contractor is not necessarily what's covered by professional liability. So we're not requiring coverage of the same thing. So there may be a claim for some kind of infrastructure problem and you may not know until you're down the claims process, whether it's going to be your contractor's general liability that's going to cover it or the engineer's professional liability. And I'm sorry, my phone is going off because I had told. Sorry about that. I thought that it was on silent, but it was on vibrate, so it was a little loud in my pocket.
Counselor Doyle.
Yeah. I didn't even have my hand up. So first off, just to be clear, as to something that you mentioned about the Mountain Gate Slide, which tends to be the one that we look at for a claim. My understanding is there were multiple claimants in that and it still wasn't $1 million. So let's be clear on that, if I remember even in your memo, so.
Yes, in that case, the damages that the engineer was responsible for was $500,000 in damages. And a reason that it was that low is because there was no actual encroachment on the homes. It stopped just short of that. I think they got very lucky. And then also they were able to settle it before attorney's fees were involved. Had attorney's fees been involved, which, you know, is a likely outcome. If you don't settle early, then the amounts could have been a lot higher. So I do think that the city was very lucky in the perspective that they were able to settle it early and keep those total damages lower than they could have been in that case.
So we're having them carry them so that they can pay for the attorney fees, not for the damages?
The professional liability coverage, that's what part of what a claims limit in insurance covers is the cost of defense. And the cost of defense is unfortunately very high.
Of course.
And usually a large part of what insurance is providing is that coverage for the legal defense costs.
So I, I understand that you're approaching this from the, from the viewpoint of the attorney and your job is to keep us out of litigation. I understand that. But I also think there's a point where we're over insuring and we're looking at the worst case scenario and what might happen. And if we haven't seen that, which I'm trying to figure out if we have, and someone asked, and I asked before, is there anything where you can show me where there were $2 million in damages that we had to deal with? We haven't seen that. And the person I want to qualify with, with counsel, the person who wrote the letter to us was, isn't just a private engineer. This is someone who was the manager and worked on capital projects for the city of Eugene and then became the, what would be their PIP, Peppys, was the manager for that department as well. So he's not just looking at it from the external side. He also has had experience on the internal side. So that's, that's important to mention. And you mentioned that Eugene doesn't carry that or require that, but a lot of jurisdictions don't even, they don't require proof of professional liability insurance. And so the big thing I have is that when we talk about PIPS, we're talking about doing design standards that the city has requirements for, right? I mean, we have, we have design standards that we give engineers when they're going to design a street that's going to become the property of the city or the wastewater. It has to be a certain type of material. It has to be a certain depth. It has to be a certain width, all of those things. Am I not correct in that? There's, it's pretty rare that they go off and like design something cool that's in their mind that they want to design when you're doing public improvements.
Do you want a response to that part of the question?
Yeah.
Okay. So the city does have standards, for example, minimum grades. And there's a lot of engineering design calculations that go in. The city doesn't specify exactly how a design professional meets those standards or does their calculations or every aspect of the engineer design. We have standards and then it's the engineer's job to figure out the best design to meet those standards. So, for example, what slope does the pipe need to be installed at to properly drain the level of wastewater that's generated? The city doesn't have, you know, that detailed of calculations for every type of infrastructure project. So what the city is usually checking the, the standards that we do have, but it won't necessarily look at are all the material specifications being used in every context, the minimum to achieve an outcome, and our standard is the outcome and not the specific specification. We also do have specifications that say, this is the, you know, width you have to use in this context. So I said, I would think there's a mix of both. There's certainly a lot of engineering judgment that goes into designing public improvement permits. And do you want to add anything to that, Jeff?
Okay. So what, what made in your list, on your permits for privately, your table? Why did, why are public improvements considered high risk? What qualified them to put them in a high-risk category as opposed to a moderate risk?
Looking at this project, if we're considering things that are above 100,000 in our complex facilities or systems, I think it's high risk because there are a lot of different types of, sorry, let me back up. So risk is usually a function of the severity of what can happen multiplied by the likelihood of that outcome. So for public improvement permits, I characterize that as a high risk because the severity of what could happen in terms of damages or types of claims or issues that could arise can be very, very high. So even if those are slightly less likely to occur or less likely to occur, they balance out in my judgment to be a higher risk or high risk in terms of the types of permitting projects that the city does. Is this, you know, this is a subjective scale. So is this high risk as compared to a, you know, designing a skyscraper? No, but in the terms of, you know, ranging from capital improvements at the one end to work in the right of way that doesn't require permit at the other end, PIPs fall in that higher, you know, higher end of that risk because there are lots of different types of issues and things that could go wrong and could result in, in high damage value claims or disruptive to the community claims, even if the risks are lower for those.
Yeah, and I guess I would, I would agree with that if it was when you're talking about geotech and developing in, you know, higher elevations and in places like that, but, but the standard, we tend to be 500 feet. I mean, we're not, we're not dealing with a ton of slopes like, you know, and when we do, that stuff gets a lot of looks to it. So I'm just looking at the, the construction defect cases are often complex. And I'm just trying to find out if you have other examples besides the one that we had. And then my biggest thing is I'm not asking, I'm not, I don't, I don't think that we need to remove insurance, but I do think that the $2 million, $3 million is excessive, especially in comparison to what has, what we've seen and not just in our area, but in other areas. And I would like to see us go back to the pre-COVID limits and not basing it on the tort law rates. I just think that it's excessive. I think that the encroachment permits probably don't even need that. I mean, not that they shouldn't carry it, but that we don't, shouldn't have those liabilities, those limits on it. But that the, the PIPS, that we could set it up so that we go back to the 1 million, 2 million and then have a caveat in there that says, if this becomes a higher level project, which is going to involve geotech or stormwater reports and different things like that, then, then the option is available to require at that point. Because we are just, we are talking about the design, the design professional. We're not talking about the person that's out there moving the ground and actually installing this stuff where people could be running around and could have those problems. We're talking about the person that's doing the drawings. And it's almost a disservice to say that our, that we're hiring or using or allowing professionals to do this work and they're not professionals. I mean, they're engineers with licensing, just like you as an attorney. And so I know there's different levels of that, but we also, I feel like, have some responsibility in looking at who we're allowing to do this work within our jurisdiction and saying, you know, these are people that we trust to do decent work and we have engineers that are supposed to be reviewing stuff. And if you see something that kind of goes, well, wait a second, this one could have like some issues with the grade or with that, then those would be the areas that they would be checking, you know, not necessarily the average ones that come in. So I would like to see us consider going back to the rates that we had before and to maybe do, I mean, I don't want to cause a whole bunch of more work for the staff, but I think that there are, that a lot of these are in a, in a pool of like, what's high risk? It's up in the 75th, you know, 71st street and it's, and it's got a lot of trees and it's got a lot of that stuff versus something that's in downtown Eugene that's flat, that they're just needing to put in, you know, a certain amount of wastewater pipe or they're, they're putting in a private, I mean, a public street or something like that. So I'd like to see that happen.
I just want to clarify one thing. The city has not ever had a $1 million coverage limit for professional liability insurance. Since 2017, it's, the requirement's been 2 million with some case-by-case exceptions made. And then before 2017, the limit was 500,000. So I just want to be, I want to make sure that I understand what the request is.
Perfect. Yeah, I would like it to go back to the pre-2017 rates. Because if that was where we weren't seeing those, you know, if we haven't seen this uptick in claims, I'm not quite sure why we're requiring that. And I think there's another thing to keep in mind too, is the cost of this. This isn't just like one step up on insurance. So a lot of insurers don't do 2 million, $3 million policies. They do 2 million, $4 million policies because that's how they carry them. And this, the cost to the, the design professional can be significant. And then they're not having to just carry that while they design and turn in and the plans get approved. They have to carry that insurance until the entire project is completed and then a full year after that while it's on warranty. So we're talking about upwards of, you know, $1,000 to $3,000 per year. And, and we have some great large firms that work in our community branch, engineering KPFF, that can afford that, that can absorb that because they do enough jobs that they can spread that throughout their jobs that they have. But there are smaller folks, you know, that we may not even be calculating when you were talking about engineers that have done work in our community. How many engineers do we have that won't, that won't even do work? I've talked to several who are like, I don't even hassle with Springfield because it's just, it's a lot. It's the, the requirements on insurance and other things, they just don't, they choose not to do work in our community. And I don't want to limit our, our pool of people that we could choose from. So I'm hoping that we can continue to have this conversation and maybe make some, make some changes. And thank you.
Could you talk to us more about the case-by-case basis? In the sense of, you know, what is the, how many people are using it? Is it commonly known about? And maybe this is a Jeff question. How, what are we lowering the limits to?
It was, in my review, it was one individual making requests for lower insurance requirements. That individual is a relative of the individual that's making the request to go to lower limits now. And so I don't know of anyone outside of that scope. Did you have requests from anyone other than one? And they were not typically based on risk. It was based on, I had lower insurance. The correspondence I saw was, I had lower insurance last time. I'd like lower insurance this time. And it was for projects that I would, that include things like engineered stormwater designs and higher, higher risk things. So it's definitely not just those projects that are less than $100,000.
Want a little more on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff Pascal, Community Development Director.
And I think, I think the extension I'm trying to wrap my head around is, do we, is there more running room in, in this category of, hey, look, if Counselor Doyle's got, you know, I was describing kind of an issue where you kind of have the price of the project doesn't really match the price of the liability insurance. Do we have more running room in this lane of, hey, there needs to be kind of an opt-out process to get people from, you know, places where the, the system clearly, clearly doesn't work?
We do have more information. Our, Jamie Aboa, our. We do have more information. Our, Jamie Abella, our risk manager, also reached out to Brown and Brown, who are our consultants, risk for, they're our insurance broker. They're also our risk consultants. They gave a, an estimate that the range for professional liability coverage at $2 million is most typically between about $500 to $2,000 per year. And that would be one policy. So the $3,300 premium that was quoted in the letter is very high. It's also, it's just a $2 million policy professional liability. The two, three or two, four is for general commercial liability, which is not what we're requiring design professionals to carry. And that was misunderstanding on my part of the way those coverage limits work in the earlier memo that I sent to you. So it is just a $2 million versus a $1 million policy.
Right. So when Counselor Doyle's talking about, you know, the brackets that they sell on the insurance market or the current requirement is something that's commonly sold on the insurance market.
It is. And it's also, there's also an option to do a $1 million professional liability coverage with a $1 million umbrella policy, which can sometimes be a more affordable option.
From your perspective, if somebody came in with that as a more affordable option, that would meet this requirement?
That meets all the requirements. Yeah. We're very explicit that an umbrella policy can be combined with another policy to meet our, meet our limits.
Okay. And Jeff, could you maybe answer the other question I have?
So on, on maybe doing the risk assessment case by case. So I can tell you the practice I used when we were getting those requests. And, and Kristi is right, predominantly was one individual. And then there was one other project I can remember. I can't remember who it was. But usually what I would require is the staff engineers who do the reviews of the PIPs to kind of give me a one pager of the risk, what was going into the project, things like that. So I could look at what that risk, so that was kind of on a case by case, extra work for those staff. I think going forward in the future, if this is something that the council was interested in, I think the easiest way to do that would be to having a, you know, matrix that said, so that it was easier for staff, you know, Counselor Doyle mentions geotech. Well, that's in our hillside. Hits that, it follows through the matrix and we get to that high risk. And it's just a staff, you know, it's just developing something, a tool like that. But that's, if I were to recommend something like that, or if the council wanted to do something like that, I think in order to ease staff use of having to sit there and use this subjectivity, and figure out what the risk is and make that decision and having it continually fall to either the director or the engineer, that would be the best way to go.
And yeah, and I'll let Counselor Rodley jump in here in a second. I guess the one comment I want to make is I'd be really hesitant to go to a 2017 level, right? That is a whole pandemic ago and there's been a lot of inflationary pressure. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around, you know, about whether or not $500,000 of liability in $2017 translates to the same. But I think there's, there's a path here, I think, to describe, to work through some of this. Go ahead, Counselor Rodley.
Thank you. I have a statement, then I have a question. In my opinion, the, the case by case, I'm, I'm just, I'm always wary of anything that's like case by case or one offs, because that's where we just, it's just, it's number fair, right? And you all have pointed out the fact that it takes more staff time to do that. But yes, I mean, if you were going to have a matrix or a tool or something that makes it so that you have this, this trail of how the decision was made as opposed to somebody's always asking for this and we say yes, you know? So I'm, I'm always wary of a case by case or a one off or a, we do this for this or not. So I just want to say that, that I would not be a fan of that. But I wonder if you could talk a lot, we're, we're sort of looking at it from one lens. But let's say hypothetically, we went back to, you know, 2017 or we decreased it. I'm curious to just sort of say out loud, like, what would that look like if something happened and we had to absorb the risk of that? What would that be? Thank you.
Yeah, that would be the city paying out damages from the general fund or depending on the type of claim it was, there, it might be possible to pay out damages from the street fund or, but it would have to be, you know, very limited type of damages. If the damages were in the form of reconstruction, for example, those might be able to be paid out of infrastructure or utility funds. But otherwise they would be paid out of the city's general fund. CIS is not going to cover something that result, that arises from professional liability by a design professional that should be covered under a professional liability policy, whether we've required one or not. So it's not something that we're going to be able to recover from our insurance. And that's what we've seen in the past is that the claims that we have had have been denied by, CIS is denied covering those and they have been paid out from the general fund.
Go ahead, Counselor Doyle.
Can you follow up on that? Because you're saying that there were claims that you've had to pay out. And are we going back to the memo that you sent? Okay, because those had nothing, those weren't design flaws that, that you gave us as examples of payouts. I remember very specifically that, that there was, that was different. So I just, I just don't want you to be using an example for something that that's not what it was.
The landslide issue was a design flaw and it was paid out by the engineer's professional liability insurance policy.
Right. You were talking, you just said the ones that you've had to, that the cities had to pay out because there wasn't the insurance that you would have had to pay out or that you've paid out on because they didn't have professional liability. Those weren't design flaws. You didn't, none of those were design flaws. The only one you had on there and all of those examples was the mountain gate. And I just want to be clear about that. So.
The city paid out, paid out based on a design flaw. We paid out claims against the city. And then we were reimbursed for those claims by the engineer's professional liability coverage. So that was one example that I was referencing. And then there was another claim related to a water pipe burst where we were in dispute about what the cause of the issue was. And there was an allegation that there was a design flaw, but because we settled it before there was any fact finding, we don't know if the issue was a design flaw or a lack of maintenance or earth movement unrelated to the design work. It was pretty, the claim was settled at a very preliminary stage.
Are you talking about a stormwater line?
No, there was a water pipe issue. I don't want to get too much into.
We don't, the city doesn't manage water. The sub does.
The city is responsible for the PIP process for all public utilities, including for sub water. So the sub doesn't have their own PIP process where they're reviewing construction documentation. The city coordinates all of that. So there can be an allegation that the city allowed a PIP for infrastructure that we don't set the standards for or design, but we are responsible for, you know, the development review process and then the PIP permitting process. And so the nature of the claim there was that through our development review process, which didn't include a PIP, but through our development review process previously, before PIP, before the current PIP process, the city made an error that resulted in a water design or water issue with the water pipes that what the allegation was, it was a design flaw that then resulted in the damage.
Yeah. I just think that we have to keep in mind that we can, we can try to ensure for every single situation and make sure that we're covering everything. We could require that people do 300 year storm plans when they send in stormwater. We don't do that, right? Even though that could happen. It's 10 year, 100 year, whatever. So that's, that's all I'm saying is that we need to not be over insured just because we're scared of like what could happen, which it just seems.
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that it's scared so much as trying to understand that we're about how we're good fiscal stewards with the public stallers, right? You know, our risk tolerance is a product of, our risk tolerance is a product of that. Now, I think the question we have to, is like, okay, well, what do we want to do from here? Right? Like, A, great information, really interesting conversation, but we could not do anything. Or, you know, we could ask for a little bit more, you know, information. There are some places where it sounds like the staff would be comfortable lowering, you know, the, the lot, the insurance level. And I'm kind of looking around to see. Go ahead.
You mentioned something earlier about an option of possibly lowering it for housing projects. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Well, if we do that, the encroachment permits type two are more used by housing. So if we lower it for encroachment permits type two, then we're going to capture proportionally a lot more housing projects. It's just more common that housing projects would use that. It also, you know, LTD and sub, it would lower it for them, but they are going to have their own capital requirements for their contractors and it would be a side effect. But also you could look at, you could certainly look at what's the underlying purpose of the development and making some adjustments there based on if it's for housing, then it's this. And if it's for commercial, then it's that. That, that may be serving a purpose of helping to kind of incentivize or, or take on more risk for housing production to try to stimulate that. I don't have any information on how many, how much housing we haven't seen because of public improvement permit requirements. I don't know that there's, there hasn't been any comments to the city that like, we would have done this housing development but for your PIP requirements. The one difference in larger PIPs between housing and commercial is that every subdivision requires stormwater treatment to be designed to city standards through a PIP process. And that is not required on the commercial side. Those are designed privately and be, and are maintained by the commercial or industrial property and they don't go through a PIP. So for stormwater at least, there's a higher risks associated with water damage or flooding that we only see with residential projects for the most part.
Counselor Rodley.
Thank you. I appreciate you being able to answer all of our questions. I think to your point, Mayor, you know, like where do we go from here? I mean, I'm interested in having more conversations, but I also, you know, I, I feel the, you know, I, I feel like my responsibility or our responsibility is to be good stewards and to protect and to, to watch out for risk in terms of the city and taxpayer dollars that pay for that. So, you know, it's going to, if it's going to come against the general fund and all of that. So that's going to be, that's definitely my lens. It doesn't, if we had 75 people coming up here and just saying Springfield is horrible. We can't build in Springfield, which is not true. It would, that would influence me in some different ways. But since we don't, and we, this isn't, this isn't 2017. This is now and things cost a lot more and all of that. I'm just, you know, I want to, I want to mitigate risk as much as possible and also incentivize housing. So it's hard for me to understand just how big of, if it is a problem that we're trying to solve or if it's, you know, how big is this problem that we're trying to solve or is it a problem? And is it unreasonable? It doesn't sound like it's unreasonable. And I'm open to more conversation because we're not at a decision point yet.
Counselor Rodley.
I just want to thank everyone for allowing us to have this conversation. I really appreciate it. I just appreciate that, the chance to have the talk and to get everybody's idea. So I just wanted to say that out loud.
And I think, you know, where, where maybe I'm hearing some potential consensus would be to address that encroachment permit issue, right? There's some head nods around saying like, if, if everybody's looking at this and going, okay, we could potentially lower this, then there'd be some interest in there. And then, you know, maybe some work around the, our risk assessment tool to make it a little bit easier and more approachable from a staff perspective, I think.
Yeah. And, and if it was $500,000 and I was talking about a million, I'm actually talking about meeting you kind of in the middle when it comes to the pit projects too. I'm just talking about that $2 million professional liability. So I would just like to at least consider where we would be with that because that's still double what it would have been back before when we still didn't have that many claims. So.
And I think the, the other piece that might be, and you touched on it for a minute and that was that you described it as like, there's more than one way to get to the answer here, right? Is that well known in the development community?
We have tried, we've, I've relayed that a lot. We, when I review insurance attachments, I often see umbrella coverages, umbrella policies in the $10 million for firms. And they're meeting their general liability or their professional liability with umbrella policies that are much higher. So I think it is known that they're, that that's, it's in our EDSPM standards explicitly. And then I think it is just known, a good insurance broker should be able to direct someone to, to their options.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm wondering if the, if a good look at that, a risk assessment tool. And again, this is a pretty technical and, you know, perspective. So I'm kind of looking at the city manager to help us with this. May get to the question that Counselor Doyle is bringing up, which is, hey, you know, for something a little, you know, that fits in one bucket that is actually, we've got lower risk. Do we have a path to kind of drive, you know, lower, lower the cost?
I think that what I'm hearing is that we'll go ahead and just lower that encroachment permit type two insurance to 1 million. That doesn't take any formal council action. And then I'll schedule another work session when time allows to review a draft risk, I'll call it a risk matrix. And so then it's not a risk assessment, which would be more specific to each project. But a matrix could just be like, if the project includes X, then these are the insurance levels. And we'll bring that back with some information for council on which, you know, how many of different types of projects would, where would projects in the past have fallen on this, on the matrix tool?
Thank you, Mayor Council, and thank you also to the city attorney's office for their thorough work on this as well as our community development department. You know, I was thinking about this because we're talking about risk and, you know, risk is something that government agencies are very avoidant of, right? And for good reason, because we are stewards of the public funds. And there's also, another thing that I think about is reputational risk. So if you did have a project that went awry and something went wrong and then people would be, you know, why city, did you not require this? Why did you not think of this? So these are the types of things that, you know, I ruminate over as well. But what, what I'm hearing from you tonight is agreement that perhaps on the encroachment side, going down to 1 million would be acceptable to you. I was just kind of looking around for nods. Also, I was curious, you know, if in our research going back before this body, it might be a good extra step for us to maybe talk to some trade associations or people in this industry to see, you know, what is their perception of, of this type of issue with working with our city? Because I, I think that kind of outreach never hurts, such as the Home Builders Association. As far as a risk assessment tool, I want to also be sensitive to the fact that our staff is really, we're entering into the busiest time of the year. Oregon does have a construction season. And so I was hoping in the circling back with this board, I wanted to manage expectations around that. So if we could do something in the latter part of the year, if that would be acceptable to this council.
Yeah, that would be fine. And I think if, if I asked Allison to find more time on the spring agenda, right? Like I'd be in a lot of trouble. That would be fine. Thank you. I think we've got everything. Look at this one. Lively liability conversations. Thank you both. All right. Springfield housing update.
All right. I feel a nice tie in because we were talking about housing. Hi, I am Katie Carroll, housing analyst for the city, joined by Chelsea Hartman, one of our senior planners. Do slide. Oh, yeah, we're ready for him. Cool. Thank you, Allison. I'm here tonight to talk to you about housing. So tonight's work session is going to touch on multiple housing related topics that the city is and will be working on over the next few years. While it's not the focus of tonight's presentation, there is a more in-depth update on the city's current housing strategies as part of your packet attachment three. As you all know, cities across Oregon are challenged by a lack of housing affordability and availability. And at the state level, the governor and legislature have responded by prioritizing housing production and affordability statewide through legislative changes, rulemaking and funding. Among these actions are significant changes to Oregon's required land use housing planning, which is goal 10. And we're going to get into that some tonight. Also, as part of the state's efforts to focus on housing, Oregon Housing and Community Services, or OHCS, has produced the first state of the state's housing report recently. So we'd like to start this off by sharing some points from that report as well as some data specific to Springfield, just to help contextualize the challenges that we're facing meeting housing need both locally and across the state. And there's some additional data that we're not sharing for sake of time that's in attachment four in your packet as well as citations to this information. And then some of the graphics that you see are coming from the updated housing strategy handout, which is also in your packet as attachment two. So cities across Oregon, including Springfield, are experiencing challenges due to a mismatch between the supply of housing and the demand for it. Oregon's population grew faster than the national average over the last two decades and housing development in Oregon was negatively impacted, like many places across the country, by the Great Recession. And due to that, Oregon basically got behind in supplying enough new housing to meet population needs. As of 2019, there were three new Oregon residents for every one new housing unit permitted in the state. And the state's now estimating that we need around 500,000 new housing units over the next 20 years, both to make up for past underproduction as well as future need. And we're seeing this trend followed in Springfield in the decade after the Great Recession. So 2010 to 2019, less than half the number of housing units were built than any prior decade going back. of housing units were built than any prior decade going back to 1940. That's what that large graph is showing. It's just kind of comparison of all of our current housing stock by the decade it was built in. And we know that this is a problem in Springfield because we're consistently seeing really low vacancy rates. So as of the 2023 census, the rental vacancy rate was 2.1%. It should really be more like 5% in a healthy market. And the homeownership vacancy rate was around 0.4% and really should be more like 2%. So when there's a higher demand for housing than supply, prices go up. Statewide, low interest rates during 2020 made homeownership more accessible, but it also really drove up prices. Statewide, from May to September of 2020, the average price of a single-unit home went up $68,000, which represented the same amount of growth as a prior 3.5-year period of time, but just in a five-month span. And housing prices tend to be sticky, so they're kind of resistant to downward market pressure. So even though interest rates have since gone up and sales have gone down, prices haven't really declined. And Oregon also has higher home prices than the US average, so we're kind of seeing that additional impact. And Springfield has seen steady growth in our average sales price over the last few years, but definitely an increase in COVID and post-COVID times. There was a 48% increase in the average sales price from 2019 before COVID to 2024. Prices did peak in 2022 and have gone down slightly, so I guess we'll see where that goes in the next couple of years. The rental market is also challenging. In Oregon, it was pretty stable going into 2020, but rents rose sharply during COVID and have not come down because the price of rental housing also tends to be pretty sticky. The median monthly rent in Springfield is actually not particularly high compared to some other places, around $1,200 a month, but it has increased significantly in the last few years. From 2019, pre-COVID, to 2023, when the last census information is available, it went up 29% the median rent. And kind of the other side of this, of why it's a problem, is that across Oregon and in Springfield, incomes have not kept pace with the rising housing costs. Oregon wages have typically lagged behind the US average and only reached it in 2022. And then if you look at the graphic on the left of the slide, comparing Springfield's median income to the state's median income, it's about $13,000 lower. So if you're thinking about a state that has kind of lower than the national average, Springfield is lower than that. There additionally is a disparity in income between renters and homeowners, so renters are often more susceptible to price increases. In Oregon, about 37% of households are renters, but 51% of household, of those renters earn, sorry, renters are 37% of households, but there are 51% of households that earn below 80% of the area median income, which is generally considered to be low income. And the median income of Springfield renters is about $32,000 less than Springfield homeowners. And statewide, data shows that about 75% to 85% of evictions in Oregon are due to nonpayment of rent rather than other causes. Overall, about a third of Springfield households are cost burdened, which means that they pay over 30% of their income on housing costs. But this is higher among Springfield renters. 44% of Springfield renters are considered to be cost burdened, and almost a quarter of renters, at 23%, are considered severely cost burdened, which means that they pay over 50% of their income on housing costs. And that's kind of intro data we have. We'll have some more in a little bit. I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea.
Awesome. So now I'm going to get into how this is influencing some state legislation and new requirements that cities will have to do around housing planning. So House Bill 2001, that was passed in 2023, is known as the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. This focused on different ways to increase housing production, affordability, and choice, and resulted in significant changes to statewide planning Goal 10 for housing and Goal 14 for urbanization. The related rulemaking is split into three major topic areas that are shown here on this slide. Some of these rules were adopted at the end of 2025, or 2024, and then the rest will be done this year. So cities must regularly plan for and take action to address housing needs by adopting a housing capacity analysis, which we've done before, and then a new housing production strategy, which is something we haven't done yet. So this is going to influence a lot of the housing planning work, that I'll kind of talk about the new state responsibilities related to this, and then get into the local responsibilities. So for the state, they have the responsibility, they developed a methodology for determining our 20-year housing need and eight-year production targets for all cities in Oregon. They also are publishing this information in publicly available dashboards that share the data in an interactive way. And those dashboards also track progress of cities towards meeting their housing production targets and monitoring equitable housing outcomes by comparing us to peer cities with similar market types and cities within the same region. So this information will be published by the state annually in January, and Katie's going to talk a little bit more about the ONA methodology and the numbers specifically for Springfield in a moment. So ONA also established this Housing Acceleration Program under the Department of Land Conservation and Development to ensure that compliance with state rules and compare cities' progress. Essentially, the lowest-performing cities get referred into this program, and it results in a state-managed audit of our housing policies and programs and an agreement to actions that can address any identified barriers to housing production, affordability, and choice that are within a city's control or influence. Under this, the state will also provide technical assistance and other resources to help local governments meet housing goals. So for the local responsibilities, a new analysis called the Contextualized Housing Need requires cities to start with the 20-year housing need from the state and the eight-year production target by income level, then provide local context by identifying the specific housing types, characteristics, and locations that we'll plan for. This also requires analyzing fair housing issues, identifying measures to affirmatively further fair housing, which are meaningful actions that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities that are free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on different protected characteristics, such as race, familial status, and disability, just to name a few. And finally, it will include developing a plan for ongoing monitoring of fair housing issues. Another big chunk of the work under local responsibility is the Housing Capacity Analysis, and this is a plan to accommodate our 20-year housing need by the types, characteristics, locations, and affordability for different income levels. And this will replace Springfield's Residential Land and Housing Needs Analysis that was adopted in 2011. The Housing Capacity Analysis also involves, or so it involves conducting a buildable lands inventory to assess our capacity within the current urban growth boundary and identifying ways to accommodate our housing need by more efficiently using that land or considering urban growth boundary expansions. And then the last piece under local responsibility is the Housing Production Strategy. This identifies actions to address the eight-year housing production target and must demonstrate how we're working towards meeting the needs that are identified in the contextualized housing need component of the work. So the ONA rulemaking is continuing this year. The state rules will be related to capacity and urbanization and impact how we do our buildable lands inventory and any urban growth boundary expansion analysis. Due to this, Springfield won't begin updating our residential buildable lands inventory until 2026, so that we know the rules we're working under. And updated assumptions for our current housing capacity within the UGB are unknown at this time. But given the new 20-year housing need from the state and new limits on how we can account for efficiency measures, it's anticipated that we'll likely have to consider an urban growth boundary expansion for residential land in the next cycle. As part of the rulemaking this year, something they're looking at, cities must now also identify development-ready lands in addition to just buildable lands. So development-ready lands are currently annexed and zoned to allow for housing. They must be readily served through adjacent public facilities or identified for the near-term provision of public facilities through an adopted capital improvement plan. And they must not be encumbered by any local, state, or federal protective regulations. So under this, if the housing production target is greater than our capacity for development-ready lands, we would have to identify actions in our housing production strategy that prepare lands for development or increase the capacity of our existing development-ready lands. The state is also working to develop adoption-ready actions that can be included in our housing production strategy. They're now talking about different levels of adoption readiness, so I'm anticipating that some of those actions will still take a good amount of work before we can adopt and implement them locally when we begin that part of the work. And I'll turn it back to Katie to talk about some of Springfield's housing numbers.
Cool, thank you. So in the past, cities calculated their 20-year housing need locally using a methodology that was largely based by, on population growth. But as part of the ONA, this 20-year housing need is now going to be created, well, is being created by the state for each region, and then cities are, from there, allocated a portion of the regional share for their own production targets. And the ONA methodology accounts for housing underproduction units that are assumed to be lost to second-in-vacation homes and housing for people experiencing homelessness. And then it also allocates that need by income level. So Springfield's 20-year housing need, as calculated by that ONA methodology, is 6,937 new housing units over the next 20 years, with an annual production target of 470 units every year for the next eight years. And that 470 units' front loads are total housing production to account for underproduction and housing for the homeless in kind of the earlier part of the 20-year period. And as you may imagine, this target exceeds historic development trends in Springfield. And then specifically, want to point out that over the next eight years, 68% of Springfield's housing need within that target is for households that earn below 80% of the area median income. And the reason why that's important to pull out is housing, to serve people at these income levels typically requires direct subsidy in order to make it affordable.
So Katie, is that something that's specific to us as a city or when they push down, like, our, our goal is sort of a share of a regional goal? So has everybody got that same mix? Or is that something that could be unique between Springfield and Eugene?
That's a good, what, like the 68% for example?
I think generally, I did look at Eugene's numbers, and it's pretty similar. I think across the state, everyone's having or being required to have these new housing production targets at the lower income levels, and I think that is because they're now accounting for housing for those experiencing homelessness and just trying to catch up. So a shared challenge for us all.
Yeah, and I think just because you brought it up, the other point about this that I think's really good to emphasize here is the regional allocation. That's really new because it used to be everyone sort of did these insular calculations, and now it's sort of being spread. Okay, so for comparison, the adopted Springfield Residential Land and Housing Needs Analysis that Chelsea mentioned that was done in 2011 noted that the 20-year housing need was 5,920 units, with 51% of that housing for households earning below 80% of the area median income. So in this next round of housing planning, we'll be planning for more housing than when this last analysis was done, and then specifically more housing that is affordable to households with lower incomes. And as I noted on the previous slide, this exceeds historic development trends. This graphic here is just showing our building permit data for residential units over the last five years. Springfield has issued building permits for 1,756 housing units during that time. As part of your Packet in Attachment Four, we have that trend going back 10 years, if you want to see it further back. The highest annual total in the last decade was in 2023, when we had 521 permitted units. And that was due, for the most part, to Marco Lometto's, which, as we all know, was decades in planning and development before getting to that point. And if we took the average over these past five years, that would come out to around 350 units per year, which is still, you know, more than 100 less than this new annual target that we've been given by the ONA. And digging in a little bit more on this housing at these lower income levels, so as I mentioned, 68% of our need over the next eight years is for households with incomes below 80% of the area median income. And housing at these income levels, for the most part, needs subsidy, with pretty significant subsidy needed to serve people in the 0% to 30% AMI range. And Oregon ranks third in the nation per capita for people experiencing homelessness and first in the nation for unsheltered homelessness among families with children. According to the county, at some point in 2024, there were 1,208 people in Springfield that were experiencing homelessness, 20% of those were minors. And accounting for housing for this population is likely a pretty big driving factor behind why we're seeing so many units at these really low income levels in this new analysis. And for some additional context, since 2018, there have been 108 units built in Springfield that are reserved for households at or below 80% AMI. And obviously, this occurred over several years, and it only accounts for about a third of Springfield's annual production target for these income levels in this new methodology. And this just reinforces the challenges of building at these income levels, especially when there's so much subsidy needed and limited subsidy available. And going to turn it back over to Chelsea.
Okay, so the last bit of this presentation is a follow-up to the February 10 Council Work Session, where you all discussed where to implement Oregon's Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules for climate-friendly areas. Part of the CFEC rules require cities to identify existing and new tools or strategies that promote housing development and mitigate displacement if housing costs increase as CFAs redevelop over time. Springfield's Housing Strategy Handout, which is Attachment Two in your packet, provides a good overview of the city's existing efforts. Most of those do apply citywide. The city's housing diversity tax exemption is one that is area-specific, and it overlaps really well with the climate-friendly area locations that council selected in February. And this includes the Glenwood Riverfront, downtown, and Mohawk. The project team identified a list of possible tools under these broad categories shown here on this slide that could increase housing production and help alleviate pressures of possible displacement. In general, the tools could be applied to any of the CFA locations, and many of them could make sense citywide as part of the city's upcoming housing planning efforts that we'll talk about. So as a refresher from a month ago, the survey results from the Fall 2024 CFA Outreach included questions about possible housing tools we should consider, and 41% of participants ranked tenant support as the highest priority, and this includes things like renter protections. 32% of participants ranked financial tools as a high priority, and this includes things like direct subsidy or tax incentives. And overall, there was a strong desire for new affordable housing and helping current residents have options to continue to live in the community, and a general acknowledgement that reducing the cost of development could help result in more housing units at different price points. There was also general support for other tools, such as public-private partnerships and streamlining development. So I'm going to get a little bit more specific with some of the tools. So they are included in Attachment Five in your packet, and that, that attachment provides descriptions and information for each of them. But to have more time for council discussion on any specific questions or tools of interest, I'm going to really do a high-level overview of each of the tools and really just focus on the different levels of resources needed and any impact to city revenue. The first two categories include tools that impact design, development, and regulatory changes, and these would require varied levels of staff resources to implement, but overall would have a neutral impact on revenue. Tools on this in the following slide that are marked with an asterisk indicate tools that Springfield currently has that could be expanded, such as having pre-approved plan sets and regulations for short-term rentals. Tools like the pre-approved plans and accessible design incentives could help make it easier to develop different housing types, including housing that's accessible for those with physical disabilities. The one tool on here about reexamining requirements for ground-floor commercial is something that could be considered with the housing-related code project that I think you all just heard about earlier this, or last week. So Cascadia Partners is the consultant team working with us on climate-friendly areas. They're also working on that code project for us, and that is something we could fold into that work that we're doing. And that is something we could fold into that work that we're doing as they're looking at our existing mixed use districts. So financial tools, this ranked highly as a priority category in the survey in the fall. And most of these would require moderate to significant resources to implement. Tools like demolition taxes or a construction excise tax could generate new revenue for the city that could specifically be used to support income qualified housing. Other tools would involve foregoing city revenue. Some of these are existing that could be expanded, like the fee waiver for income qualified housing, the low income rental housing property tax exemption, or exploring an area for a new urban renewal district. And then the last category before I have my final slide and open it up to you all for any thoughts. This one shows partnerships and redevelopment as well as tenant support. All of these would require significant resources to implement and some would have a neutral impact on revenue, depending on how the tool was structured. Conversion of underperforming or distressed commercial assets into needed housing could help increase property values, resulting in increases to city revenue over time. The tenant support tools really focused on renter protections and ranked as a high priority in the survey in the fall. Renter protections can take many different forms. So if there is council, council interest in that one, the city would explore specific ways to implement that and vet those ideas with the community and decision makers as part of our upcoming housing production strategy work. Previously Springfield was awarded one time coronavirus relief funds to the Springfield Eugene Tenant Association to support their tenant hotline to assist, educate and empower renters on their housing rights issues. That funding support has since ended, but that is just one example of something we could explore as tenant support. So part of the CFAC rules require cities to include findings in our climate friendly area adoption package that identify existing and new tools or strategies that promote housing production or mitigate displacement. The CFAC rules also note that the tools would be incorporated in the city's future housing production strategy. And that process will include further analysis and vetting with the community and decision makers once we start that work. And tonight we're really seeking council direction on which housing tools from attachment five that we should include in findings for the CFA adoption package and consider further as part of the upcoming citywide housing production strategy. As part of that work, the city could choose to identify different tools to address our local housing needs if further analysis and vetting of the tools identified with this CFA project show that some actions are no longer feasible or preferred. So at this point, I'd like to turn it back to you all for any questions or thoughts. Thank you.
Other questions?
Council Rodney.
Questions and comments, but I'll take a little bit of a turn and let other folks talk. Thank you so much for this. It's exciting for me to see how far we've come just in terms of understanding the landscape. I think when I, before I even got on council and I was like, I care so much about housing. And just to just, just our understanding as a team is so much further than it is. And I just appreciate all the work that you all are doing and I love being in this with you all. One of my questions is around where you were talking about development ready lands. And those being lands that were annexed, near facilities, et cetera. Could those also be like repurposing commercial land? Or does it have to be vacant land or can it just be land that's like, where like, it's an old, like I'm thinking in Glenwood where we, there was a mobile home neighborhood that's vacant. I mean, is that a place where if we did some like rezoning work, it would make those development ready lands? Or am I thinking about that too loftily?
I think as it's defined now, that could be included as long as it's allowing housing with clear and objective standards. It would meet that definition.
Okay. So we could, we could have a project where we would like identify these lands and then figure out how to rezone them and get them ready for building basically. And thinking about them as housing and not necessarily commercial. Okay. That was one of my, my questions. And then just one of my thought processes around this is I, 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 I think I like this. I was like, I'm thinking about how I feel about this. I, I, I think I'm liking the idea of thinking about this regionally and then breaking it into smaller chunks. But I think it also provides us an opportunity to think about the solutions regionally, right? So we tend to always be thinking about what can we do at Springfield? And you went through those and we have these tools. And in the time that I've been on council, we've dug into like, how do we make it easier for people to build? How do we incentivize? How do we purchase land so that we can help to incentivize that, all of those things? So, but, and I don't know what this looks like. I'm just thinking, but if we're part of a region that is addressing this and we're often working with the same builders or people that are thinking about this area, that maybe there's potential for us to just brainstorm possible solutions in a reasonable way, in a regional way. Whether it's like, okay, let's, it might be cheaper maybe. I don't know. I'm making it up. But it might be more affordable for a developer or somebody or public, private partnership that is working in a couple of different areas. I'm thinking, you know, in terms of just, you know, how sometimes we do health clinics or whatever, we're working in a few areas at once. So just thinking about it that way, that maybe there's a way for us to say, we're all of us going at it on our own to partner with our other municipalities and say, can we do this together? And try to put a few houses here and a few houses here. And maybe they're all, particularly we're looking at rental housing. Maybe it's a few different, you know, rental housing facilities in a few different places. So just the, I'm going to stop there because those are my first two comments. But I just really appreciate that we're working with real numbers and real goals and real data and a deeper understanding of what we're up against. So thank you.
Council Blackwell.
Hi. Thank you for that. I, my question is a couple of things. 420 homes, new units a year seems like a very large amount considering our past practice and what we've been able to, to develop. So that's interesting to me to see how all these pieces can fit together and we can meet that goal. And does that start 2026? Is that year one for that?
20, well, that's where it gets kind of, is it 2027? Is it 2028?
I think it takes, once we adopt our housing capacity analysis and housing production strategy, I think. So 2027 is our analysis is due and then by the end of 2020, our production strategy.
So I guess by the end of 2029, we would have had the first theoretically 470, actually not 420. So it's even more.
470. Yeah. Yeah. So you get 120 more than what the average was the last five years. I guess that's where I got that number. So the first box under design and development regulatory changes. Most of those I'm interested in and agree with. Anytime you can have like a plug and play, uh, plan sets and get things through quicker and easier and faster for people, less expensive. That's great. The, um, reexamine the requirements for the ground floor commercial. I think that's definitely something to discuss as office space isn't maybe as in demand as it once was. I have a question on the, the short term rentals. It looks like significant resources would be utilized to kind of track that. And how many does Springfield have? I mean, as much as I've shown property over the last, well, I've been in real estate for 20 years. In Springfield, I just never come across short term rentals. So is this even something to look at? Is it anything significant in our area to even be on this list?
I don't know if we know how significant it is. I guess my anecdotal would be that it's probably becoming more so. Cause I assume we might be seeing some spillover from Eugene, given they're having housing challenges too. But yeah, I, I don't think we know that. And that's part of the challenge, I think, at this stage is that it's sort of like, let's get an initial list and then later look at it. And maybe Chelsea can talk about why it's in that order.
Yeah, it is a little weird or awkward to start identifying tools with CFAs. But all the details about like, what's the level of impact of these? Like, how would this actually be implemented and what impact would it have in our community? Will come when we do our housing production strategy work. So that's something we would have to answer as part of that. And I don't know that we would be able to answer it very easily.
Okay. And one more. On the renter protections, can you expand on that a little bit? Cause we're looking at house, housing supply, right? Adding supply and that's on here, rental protections. I understand finding ways to keep renters in their home that they're currently in, but how does that play into this?
Yeah. So the other part, so part of the tools need to focus on housing production or ways to mitigate displacement. And so renter protections is one of the few on the list that focuses on that anti-displacement aspect of keeping people in their homes instead of building new housing.
Council Stone.
If I have a single family home and I add a mother in law to it, that's part of the current structure. Does that count as one unit of housing in your production?
I believe so, as long as it's counted as a, like an accessory dwelling unit or.
Yeah, I guess I would look to someone about how it would be permitted. But if it was an ADU, I'm, I mean, we count ADUs as housing units in this. So I think the ADU would count as a new unit. So I think it would be two units.
Right. But, and so if you just had, I'm just, I want to make sure, is the process easy to go from a single family house, house to a, you know, single family with a mother in law type unit? Or is that a complicated permitting process? I know we have the ADU plans for like outside ones. Those are great. But as we're running out of ground space, but maybe we have, you know, single person living in a 2,500 square foot house and they could, they could section off a part of their house for that ADU purpose. And now they got another person living nearby them. That to me is an extra unit of housing. It seems, and I'm not sure if they're always permitting that. Would those numbers reflect that? That's, that's kind of what I'm concerned about. Is that easy to do? And are we counting those as housing units?
So I would, Sandy, you can come answer that. I don't want to give you incorrect information.
So I think it gets down to that tricky thing of definitions. So a housing unit needs to have a separate address, separate utilities, its own kitchen, sanitation, living space. So it depends on how you divide that. You, we allow accessory dwelling units to be within an existing structure. But if it's not meeting the full definition of a dwelling unit, like maybe you're sharing a kitchen, otherwise they're on their own. Or if it's not a full kitchen, then it wouldn't be a dwelling unit and we wouldn't capture it.
And to the ease of development, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the time.
So currently accessory dwelling units are a type one land use decision that we require prior to or in conjunction with your building permit. That is something that we have identified as potentially changing where you could go direct to building permit. So, uh, there is room to make it easier, but I don't think it's all that difficult in that we do have a few different pathways, clear and objective to meet, way to, to get to an accessory dwelling unit. Or if you can't meet those clear and objective standards, there are alternatives as to how to meet that.
I think just what I, what I want to clarify is first of all, thank you. That's great. If I have somebody living upstairs that can actually afford, let's say they're making minimum wage and they can really afford $625 a month if they're working full time and maybe they're not. And I would be very happy to lease out in upstairs mother in law with its own little kitchenette, own separate entrance. But I might not have, I might not go to the realm of saying, oh, I'm going to have a different sewer utilities, all those different pieces put together. Yet I've created, definitely created an additional dwelling unit. I just want to make sure that that's counted as part of, and included in part of our strategy.
Well, it wouldn't be a second dwelling unit, so it would not count as another unit. But you are providing housing for someone.
Right.
So, I mean, in the broader scheme of things, it will help long-term in the numbers of not as many people are out on the street or paying as much for their rent. But it's not going to count as a housing unit.
Because likewise, if we don't have a lot of those options, for example, like the mother in law type option, we're actually, all this new construction, you're right, it's going to be extremely expensive for all of our people, especially in the initial, in the initial stages. We're going to require a ton of subsidies and we don't know where all of that is coming from. So I think, okay, let's say we can't count it as such, bummer. But also what else can we do to just incentivize the housing? I think that has to be part of the conversation, but we can't, we can't just have that in isolation. Now, if it's just to meet a state mandate, fine, let's kick that can down the road. That's fine. But I, I really do want to look at kind of these, these peripheral housing situations that might not count as clear units for what we're doing for when we're trying to talk about that. I think I'm also have the economic concern of what Springfield is capable of on an economic level, knowing that it's not quite as strong of an economy as Eugene or even a Corvallis. Because from lack of university, even though we're right next door, but there, there's not quite the same strength there as we might have. So those are all my comments. Thanks.
So can I just respond before you go on? So, um, there, what we could add to this list that's not on there that I think captures your idea is home share. Um, and there actually are tax incentives for home share. There's an Oregon home share organization that helps to match people together. So it's not just your mother in law. Perhaps you want a neighbor or something like that. So we could potentially add the home share to the list to consider.
Council Mo.
Aren't we now able to, to develop building lots into smaller building lots? Most of the lots on a big lot, there's a big lot, but it's be small lots. Okay.
Council Rodney.
Okay. It's my round two. The other thing I wanted to say, two things. One, I very much been in support of render protections. That's not really a conversation that we've had, except for a little bit during COVID around how to get some money into folks. And I think, I think all of these, these expanded conversations about shared housing, how do we keep people in their homes? I think that I was in a meeting and they were sharing that the fastest increasing population of unhoused people are older people who get priced out of their homes or someone dies. And so if there are things we can do to protect folks and keep them in their homes, I would absolutely support that. And then one of the things you mentioned also, which we haven't even touched on is this inevitable eventual conversation about expanding the UGB, which sounds like woo free land. But that is, and I'm, I'm interested in all of it. As you all know, I've been just like, what, let's turn over every rock and try to figure this out. But that is where the, the sort of long-term work on infrastructure really comes into play. Because that means we have to like, you know, it's, it's a lot easier to do the infill and hook up to existing than it would be to do that. So I just want to say that yes, and I feel like that's a much bigger conversation. Thank you.
Council Weber.
I definitely don't think we're done talking about this. I have a lot of questions and a lot of notes, but, um, one of my concerns among many is it's going to take a lot to even make a dent in the target that they're putting on us. So that means we have to find ways to attract developers, you know? I mean, assessing taxes on them, like in the form of demolition or construction excise generates money for the city. But then do developers want to come and play in our space? So I feel like again, I appreciate the intent, but I'm frustrated by the restrictions that, and the place it kind of puts us in to get this accomplished. So that kind of leads to a question on a housing acceleration program where there's this conversation about referrals if we don't meet these goals. And the state providing technical assistance and other resources to refer cities to help us get there. What does, do we know what that means?
It remains to be seen. I think I'm reading it as the worst performers in a region will get referred. I think the state has very limited capacity to refer a lot of cities because they have to do the audits. So I don't know how many, I think every year they'll determine how many cities will actually even get referred into the program. I think the technical assistance may come in the form of like consultant support to work on fleshing out some of these program ideas. But that's something that's come up a lot of like, it's going to take direct subsidy to provide the low income housing. That's where we need support and that's not really baked into this.
So we have to stay after school is what it comes down to.
All right. I've, this is great work. I, I, I thought the presentation was fantastic and to see it broken down into digestible chunks for us to think about. It is really, is really helpful. I also think that it's going to require that we completely think about differently about how we're, how we're producing housing in this city. You know, the, the, I think first thing I wrote down was the urban growth boundary conversation, right? But it, it kind of cuts both ways. New, new land, you've got to find a way to serve it with infrastructure. But if we had a thousand acres sitting there with, that had infrastructure in there, that's a pretty effective way to build, have a place to build housing where we can get economies of scale. So I think there's a balance between understanding how to pursue UGBs and how to sort of, the way I thought when Council Rodney brought up the infill question was sort of efficiently consume, you know, use open land inside the city and finding that balance between the two of them. The other thing that I really, uh, that really stood out to me was just the mix of income. And it's really.
And it's really easy to look at the income requirements in the early analysis and say, and automatically jumped the idea that's like, that those are all going to be subsidized rental, rental homes or rental units. I guess the question that I have is, is there a way or how do we begin to layer in some homeownership opportunities that might hit that bracket? And I don't know the answer to that question, but one of the things that I think is really important is that we continue to build paths to get people up the, you know, the income ladder, right? And homeownership is a way to do that. Again, you know, as we're brainstorming policies and sort of thinking about this, that, that, that really, that really jumped out to me. The other thing that really jumped out to me is this question around how fast can we get from planning to, you know, building permits. Every once in a while, we drop this question that's like, hey, look, we can just send that straight to building permits, right? The most effective thing we can figure out how to do about this housing conversation is figure out how to get more things off the, you know, I have to go to planning and then to building permits and get it, get them permitted as fast as possible. And I think that is finding that right balance between, there's a lot of value in what planning does. But also, right, the easier and more streamlined we can make this, the better we're going to get our, hit our housing targets. And then lastly, the, the target seems almost insurmountable. Right? Especially with the amount of income and resources that it would require any community. And I'm sure our partners over in Eugene or our partners in any other city feel that way. And I just want to sort of call that out, like more reporting isn't necessarily going to translate to more homes. And I think when we think about legislative advocacy, we still have to consistently say, you know, we need more capacity to build homes and we need more resources for infrastructure, which is going to be a lot bigger of an ask than being able to get through just the brackets of reports. And lastly, lastly, one other thing that jumped out about the policy options, we're a relatively small city. Right? It's easy to choose all of those things and say, we're going to do all of them. And I, and I just read that from a pure execution perspective and I was like, okay, you know, we should choose policies that we can effectively execute as a city and not necessarily feel like we have to try to do everything because it's on the list. But instead get really strategic about things we can, we can target with our resources and capacities. So we go, okay, we can do that really well. But we may not be able to do another policy. And make sure that Council Stunt gets credit for any piece of housing he finds. Well, you, you described all the rental, you know, your ability to, you know, rent out an ADU in your garage. I'm just like, make sure we get credit. We need the credit for all of them. Yeah. And Council Doyle as well. Everybody's doing a lot to get this far. All right. Really important conversation. Thanks for trying to streamline it a little bit and get us back on track. I mean, you've cut 15 minutes off of, you know, when we went over on the first conversation. Did anybody have other comments? Did you get what you guys needed?
I think so. I mean, we'll be back for many more conversations on the housing production strategy. So I like the taking a light touch with climate friendly areas and then having that more comprehensive conversation of like, what is the actual impact of some of these things? And what makes sense for Springfield when we do the citywide work?
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
By five minutes. Okay, we are, I'm going to adjourn the work session and then it will be five, probably seven and a half minutes because I believe executive session's next and we got to reset the room.